Jamie said he wants to start.
I didn't want to.
And he's gonna come in.
No, that's okay. I didn't want to like screw down. It's probably.
Tell him to sit up here and calm down.
Need nobody for baby in the corner. All right, y'all ready? I'd like to call to order the June 25th Springboro Board of Education meeting. Roll call.
That.
Here.
Elijah, Good.
Here.
Psychop, here, Stukey.
Yeah, here.
1.1, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, can I get a motion for 1.2, the adoption of the agenda?
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call.
That.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Psychop? Yes, Stukey?
Yes.
1.3, can I get a motion for the approval of the June 11th special board meeting minutes?
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call.
That.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Psychop? Yes, Stukey?
Yes.
1.4, can I get a motion for the approval of the June 11th 2025 meeting minutes?
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Is it that?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Psychop? Yes, Stukey?
Yes.
Okay, under public participation introduction of guests, 2.1, we have the Springboro Education Association Report, and nobody is here. 2.2, we have the Springboro Classified Employee Association Report with nobody present. 2.3, we have no pre-arranged public participation. 2.4, do we have any public participation on an agenda item? Okay, let's move on to work session. 3.1 is our work session public participation information if you'd like to participate. 3.2, Mr. Tutor, would you please share with us about the Xavier MOU?
Sure, Madam Board President, members of the board, I come for you today to share information about a potential MOU with Xavier University. They approached us to enter into this partnership, as you know, we spend considerable amount of time in multiple universities, really giving back profession, Xavier being one of them. The benefit for the school district to enter in this MOU is our staff would receive a reduced tuition to Xavier courses. In speaking with them, I know they offer a variety of summer courses as well, which really could fit in well with our professional development flex credit process that we've started and aligned with district goals through that. It also potentially could give us access to student teachers or field placement, depending on access, as I shared earlier, they like to keep placements along the bus line as much as possible. There's times where people want to travel north, and we would be obviously receptive to that. We just think it's a great way to formalize a relationship that we've already started.
What was their purpose in reaching out to us? Like, well, how did, I see a lot of benefits for Springboro, what are the benefits that they're seeing?
Um, I just think it's another pipeline for placements for them if they need it.
Placements.
Springboro is a familiar name to Xavier with what we do through, I'll go down there and speak to their student teachers. We've hosted, we facilitated mock interviews with their student teachers who are about to enter the field as well, so they know us down at Xavier, and we think it's a fun opportunity for our staff.
Yeah, that's great.
Any questions?
If this has nothing to do with CCB, is this just kind of in a relationship and outlines some possibilities?
More around the profession of teaching, not necessarily their students.
Okay, got it.
There's no finances attached to this, right?
That's why I was curious about whether they're writing finances attached to it. And this doesn't prevent us from working with other universities?
Okay. That's great, and it sounds like a neat opportunity. 3.4, do we have any committee reports?
3.3.
Did I miss anything?
Design.
Oh, sorry, I did change that one. Oh, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Sorry, 3.3, Mr. Tutor, can you talk to us about the design coach?
Absolutely, so as you know, Forward Edge is a great partner to us. We did bring on an instructional coach for, from them this school year. It was a one day a week, they were able to fill it in January because of some staffing issues they have. They're good, they're great, and so. They kicked it to the second half of the year where it was two days a week, but only for half of the year. Felt like our staff really utilized their support. It's nice to have someone from Forward Edge providing the coaching that aligns the systems that they already have in place for us. What we've been able to do through attrition dollars, though, is expand it to a four day a week coaching. We think this is going to give more access to staff. Quite frankly, with six buildings at one day a week, it wasn't really, it wouldn't have worked this year, we had two days a week last year, just because you wouldn't get to buildings enough to really make sustained change. They do a really nice job with their evaluation at the end, I know Tracy went through that with them, where they evaluate the coaching cycles they're on as well as the touch points. But the benefits for our teachers is they'll provide either one-on-one coaching, where they take them through a coaching cycle. They will provide professional development on in-service days during building PB, before, after school, or during teacher's lunch or plan if they so choose. But I think the biggest piece for us is it really starts with goal setting. And I know that we've aligned our school calendar to really invest in that and the power of analyzing that data and giving teachers the time to respond to it. Their coach then comes in and provides coaching around that, that's even more of an impact on our students for data analysis and response.
Can you help me understand, how is the intentionality of who gets the service? Because even four days a week with six buildings, and within the buildings, a lot of teachers, so how do we, how does a teacher access this help and know what is out there?
Sure, so I can give you an exhaustive list of every way that teachers could, but I know that I've talked to principals, and from my experience as building principal, a lot of times I'll come through the evaluation system, you sit down and you're talking to people about their performance in the classroom, that's a good time to give them a little extra support if they need it.
Gotcha.
I also feel like the data meetings we have, it brings out who really is analyzing responding to data, so we're able to tag. And then, I know Celine does a good job asking who wants help too, so teachers can do it by request as well.
That's awesome. I think we can have all the data in the world, but if they don't know what to do with it, it's ineffective, so that's exciting. Any questions?
Yeah, my question was your question. Like, how are we making sure that the coaches are spread out equally?
Yeah, I said, sorry.
Well, that's okay. Sometimes we often have the same questions.
Okay, any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. Now on to 3.4 with committee reports, do we have any? No. 3.5 is discussion of any other business?
I'll chime in on this one real quick. Right before I walked over or came over here, they had just voted on the House and Senate versions, the conference committee, the Senate voted earlier today, passed, and the House passed right before I came over here. So probably tomorrow or by Friday, I'll have a list of what all, like, the House version got on this one, and Senate version won on this one, and then I'll be able to kind of sum up what it's going to do us financially. But I do know that one of the provisions draws to include emergency levies and substitute levies in the 2014 calculation, so that will be a revenue due to us. But before I give the impact of that, I also want to see some of the provisions in the Senate version would give us more money than in the House version, and then vice versa, so I want to see what those, how those trick out, and then I'll be able to hopefully not give too bad of a number, but we are going to have a loss, I do know that for sure. Just with the substitute levy, we have a 4.38 no substitute levy that will now be included in the 2014, which will then take us off the floor. It won't go into effect until tax year 2026, so it won't really affect us on that piece until fiscal '27, '28, '29. So we won't, it'll look considerably worse later in the forecast than it will in the short term, so. Oh, and I believe, I'm not positive unless Tom responds, I didn't see the final version to see if it's going to be a three-year forecast versus a five, but my gut is it's going to be a three-year forecast, so you won't even see how bad it's going to get in '28, '29, because that'll be conveniently, the clip will be off the visual, so.
So has the governor already stepped in and removed?
The governor, it goes to the governor next, and he has until June 30th, but he also has line item veto power, and then there's also the ability, if the House and Senate can override his veto as well, if they have super majority, so there's still a little bit of time, he may do some line item vetoes, but I would have no way of knowing what he might line item veto.
With the substitute, you're pretty confident they're going to include that and it'll knock us off the floor?
Yes. If he can line item veto, but I don't see him doing that. Some of the other things that were being thrown out there, I could see him vetoing, but I don't, I haven't heard anything that would suggest he would veto that.
So how long with having, if this happens, do you foresee it taking us to get back to the floor?
It would probably be at least two reappraisal cycles, so maybe '20, '30 before I could see us, I could see us getting down to maybe the '22 range at the next reappraisal, but that's also if House Bill 335, which is still in works. One of the other provisions with that was to also limit growth, so when we were to get our reappraisal, say we would get a 25% reappraisal, they could say it's capped to inflation, and if inflation was over a three-year period of 8%, then we'd cap it at eight, so we wouldn't get 25 when we get eight. That might take us a little bit longer to get back to the floor if one of those provisions were put into place. So it's really, there's a lot of bills still open in both the House and Senate on property tax reform, this was just one of the pieces they slid into the budget vote.
Questions? No one who knows what to do with that.
I know, I will get you guys a visual once I can see how all the money shakes out on those, on all the provisions, because it was 800 pages on the budget and stuff, so it's going to take a little bit of time to get here.
And there's no other opportunity for advocacy with the governor?
No.
Okay.
So, all right.
Thank you for all of your work on this. Okay, 4.1 through 4.3, Stacy, if you want to take us there?
Absolutely. Item 4.1 is approval of the May financials, we received in just $4.3 million in the month of May to the general fund, and of that, $1.3 million was state funding, $2.9 million was our rollback in Homestead that we typically get in May, $6,400,000 was our miscellaneous revenue for some leftover school fees, catering to school fees, and our interest investments. Our expenses came in at just over $5.5 million for the month, and everything is actually trending for the most part, even through June, to be under in every category, even to the revised forecast, so we are going to come in even better than even the forecast I had anticipated in the forecast. We, at the May, we had about 100 days of cash on hand when we closed, I'm still expecting it to be about 78 or 79 days, even when we close in five days. I was expecting 77 days of cash on hand when we closed June in the May forecast, so it's looking just a little bit better. I will say, it's been very busy, we had over $1.9 million in open purchase orders at the end of May when we closed, so in three weeks, we went from $1.9 million in open POs in our general fund and almost $3.5 million in all funds, to now, as of today, we only have $719,000 in open purchase orders among ad funds, and only $218,000 in general funds, so kudos to my staff, they've been diligently trying to get everything in and paid, I just want to give them a thank you on that. And we already have 340 requisition purchase requests to process when we hit the button in five days, so it'll just start all over again, so, but everything is looking good, and again, I will give you guys an update on where we're going to be at and how that'll change. Some of the provisions that they passed, we're going to have to require, be required to pass a new five-year forecast, I believe in October, normally it's November, it will be a required new forecast with the three years if that provision stood in October, but then I think it's going to be in August every year. So the May and November is going to change to like August and March or something, it's different bills, so I'll get you all of that kind of information too, when I actually see which version was accepted. And item 4.2, approval of the final fiscal '25 amendment appropriations, those are due to the county auditor by June 30th, just like every other year. And then item 4.3 is approval of the fiscal '26 temporary appropriations, that gets us started, that's all of our anticipated revenue and expenditures by fund to get us started for next school year. Permanent appropriations are due in September, so this just gets us started, and then I can make changes between now and September when we remove the final to start the year. And then we'll have that in 4.1.
Okay, yeah. 4.4, can I get a motion for the approval of items 4.1 through 4.3?
Sub moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Oh, yeah, do we have any questions?
That.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Psychop? Yes, Stukey?
Abstained.
4.5 through 4.11.
Okay, item 4.5 is the approval of payment of invoices, transfers, advances, investment of funds, appropriation adjustments for fiscal '26, we do this each year at this time as well. Item 4.6, approval of the fiscal '25 audit and gap conversion that is completed by Flatten Bergen Associates, this will be year four of our five-year contract extension that's stated. Item 4.7 is approval by the Exhibit 1 fiscal '26 local service fees, I just got Exhibit 2 today, so I will put that on the next agenda, but for Exhibit 1, they did, we did remove DataMap because we replaced it with Aubrey, so you will see a $31,000 decrease in our fees from that, but then overall, there was a 3% increase on all software costs that was voted by the school board, and on the school board, there's a member for each school district who has a voting right, so once they provide us with all of the information, we vote to do those increases, and so we will follow that process as well. Item 4.8 is approval of $3,000 for sponsorship for the Back to School Bash, and the list of sponsors are on there for you to reveal. Item 4.9 is approval of a $40 gift card, Visa gift card to Michelle Zanzow, one great teacher at Dennis Elementary from Kiara. Item 4.10 is approval of a donation of $1,000 from Springboro, I think it's the United Church of Christ Fund for the Back to School Bash. And then approval of a donation of $285.16 for the Student Meal Balance Account Fund from Graduating Seniors, you can see that list, and we are up to just over $37,000 in that fund right now, so.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for the approval of items 4.5 through 4.11?
Sub moved.
Second. I do have a couple of questions, and I'll turn it over to you guys. One question was, when I was reviewing it, I saw that we're removing DataMap with the Forward Edge, was that one of the things that you were saying that they are able to help us with?
In some sense, yes, but DataMap is a data warehouse, so is Aubrey, so we're really moving from one that's a little clunky to one that's very user-friendly.
So they would feel comfortable with the Aubrey? And the support, okay, that was the only thing with both of those pieces, making sure they would also be able to help with the Aubrey?
I don't know if you've ever been in Aubrey's era, but it's like counterintuitive to use, like, there's not a whole lot of training to it, it's.
Okay.
It's very, very user-friendly, it's created by educators.
Great, okay. My second question is the Back to School Bash, I don't remember what this is, so I was just curious since we had those different donations, sounds fun.
I can, I will have someone maybe provide you guys with an update that is all-inclusive, because I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
Where we are, but the idea is, how can we engage our community, and I know the plan was to have it on the night of the first home football game.
So we've not done this, so I'm not missing what we did in the past, okay. Yeah, I would love for some additional information, I mean, we're giving some sizable donations, so I think it's, you guys are doing a great job with some partnerships with it, but I would love some more information with that in the future. Any other questions? No? Okay, roll call.
That.
Yes.
Yes.
Psychop? Yes, Stukey?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Tutor, if you can go through 5.1 through 5.3.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Board President, so item 5.1 is our personnel report, and you're going to see several future teachers that are on there for us to employ. Hesitant to say this before July 10th, but we are pretty happy with the progress our building principal had made in the energy process. We have all of our teaching positions filled.
Amazing.
We feel like we've gotten some really top candidates, and we've been very intentional of how we deal with attrition and those dollars as well, so our principals do a great job with that, and now we're holding on until July 10th. But I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge a resignation on here, I know that Mr. Blant behind the camera here has been with us for a short six months, and he's made quite an impact, and we're certainly going to miss him this evening, so. Item 5.2, I'm seeking approval for the MOU with Xavier University that I discussed during work session, and then 5.3, seeking approval for the Extracellumstein Coach through Forward Edge, that I also just got a blowout for.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion for the approval of 5.1 through 5.3?
Sub moved.
Throw the jam.
Second.
Any questions?
I'm just glad we don't play Kings anymore.
You're what?
Roll call.
That.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Psychop? Yes, Stukey?
Yes.
Okay, 5.5, can I get appro, can I get a motion for the approval of the athletic report?
Sub moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call?
That.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Psychop? Yes, Stukey?
Abstained.
6.0, we have board member reports, comments, questions, announcements, and future considerations, and 6.1, I am going to hand it over to Mrs. Stacy.
Yes, you can go back again. Item 6.1 is the approval of the resolution determining to proceed with the bond issue, and before you entertain that, Tom Wilson from Binsmore, he's our bond counsel, he was going to give you a quick overview on what you're voting on in the next steps.
Sure, leave me everybody. The resolution declaring the necessity of the bond issue, which you passed two weeks ago, was filed with the county auditors office, to tell them the dollar amount, the interest rate, and the length of time they can act with the certificate as to the district's current assessed valuation, the mills that would have to be your own ballot to support the bond issue, and what that dollar amount is, what the millage translates to in $300,000 of the county auditors' praise value. You'll see those numbers reflected in the resolution. The assessed valuation of the district is just north of $2.1 billion. The millage that would be needed to support this $150 million bond issue, the ballot millage would be 2.8 mills, and that translates into $98,000 for each $100,000 of the county auditors' praise from that. So this resolution determines to proceed with the bond issue, a couple things happen after that, both resolutions and the county auditor's certificate, Tara will file those with the Warren County Board of Elections, and they will publish a notice and conduct them in the November election. They will also file with the Ohio Department of Education workforce and the Ohio Department of Taxation, as I mentioned, when I was here two weeks ago, I, in order to, if your dollar amount, if your debt exceeds 4% of the assessed valuation, the state of Ohio has to approve going forward on the ballot. These are, I haven't seen one turned down yet, so it's a pretty ministerial approval, so that will be filed, we're well ahead of the game of the filing deadline, Board of Elections is early August, so we're well ahead of things on that. The resolution has a form of what the ballot will probably look like, the Board of Elections and the Secretary of State that have sort of filed, will bless him over that, and have been known to tweak those, but that's generally what it will look like when it appears, fulfilling voters. That's the gist of the resolution, and three questions.
How long does it typically take for the two requests to, I'm just curious?
You'll know, you'll know, you'll know well, you'll know well in advance, the filing deadline, as I mentioned, is early August, they'll often, they'll often wait till sort of everything gets, they know what they're looking at in terms of districts across the state, and in a couple of weeks, it'll certainly be by the end of August.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming and sharing that. Can I get a motion for the approval of resolution determining to proceed with the bond issue?
Sub moved. Second.
No further questions? Okay, roll call, please.
That.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Psychop? Yes, Stukey?
Yes.
Okay, ready, set, go. All right, 6.2, we have announcements and future considerations.
Just thank you again for coming to talk to us about our decision on the bond. And just thank you to the community for the different donations that we received, super proud of the baseball team for how they, and you know, for how everything happened, but they're on the same level, super excited for them. Thank you again, Tara, and we're glad that you went and represented not only us, but our community, and other, being a voice for other districts in the state of Ohio, because I think it's really super important, and you're the right group to help to that migration. Bryce, thank you so much, Father, for what you've done for our district, but it's really appreciated.
Yeah, so I guess this is another milestone for us, you know, with the resolution, so that's exciting for the district, and lots of work ahead, but, you know, there's a lot of work that got us to even this point, so thank you to everybody that, you know, Matt, Tara, I know Carrie is not here, but a lot of hard work was put into, you know, getting us here and making sure it was a sound financial decision, as well as, you know, what we determined to be right in the district, so thanks for all the efforts we put in. Echoing what Sarah said, you know, Tara, and Carrie, I know, have traveled to Columbus probably too many times to count, and, you know, you did a fantastic job with going in front of, you know, our Congress, and trying to, our legislature, and trying to advocate for, again, sound financial decisions in school districts, but, you know, whatever happens, I feel confident that, you know, the leadership that we have in this district is, we'll be okay, but, you know, trying times ahead, and we'll have to figure out how to get to where we need to be in '26, but, you know, again, we've got the right leadership to get us there, so thank you for that. I think. Everybody's enjoying their summer. Oh, Bryce, thank you for everything you've done, and yeah, I feel like you've been here much longer than six months, and I will miss you, but I carry a lot of stuff that you want to be coaching your sons' baseball, and that's a great thing, so we'll get time to do that near your home, so again, thank you.
Sub.
Good.
Thank you, Tom, for coming for such a short time here, and I'm sure you took out a big part of your evening activities to be here. Tara, yeah, I echo what they said, it's kind of like I have, I can put my car on automatic and go to Kettering, I suppose, but, all right, you go to Columbus, right? Set it there, it knows where to go. Yeah, I think with the, what we voted on tonight, it's a big step moving forward, and now we got to give the information out there to everybody about how it's going to work, go from there. And all kidding aside, Bryce, good luck to you, and tell your uncle how.
Will do.
Okay, I just had a couple of things, Bryce, thank you, you've taken our communication to another level, and good luck to you and your future, and I just appreciate you've really brought a lot of life and done a great job of sharing out to the community the amazing things that are happening in our six buildings, so you'll be missed with that. Yes, kudos to the baseball team, and also to Sam, who did track second in Nationals, I mean, just significant, and it's, he is not just a strong athlete, he is a strong young man that is just going to do amazing things in life, so it's just neat to see Springboro represented like that. Yes, I, you know, we can have good administrators, but I think our administrators showed us the next level over these last couple of months, because you, you know, not every the next level over these last couple of months, because you, you know, not every school district was in Columbus doing what you guys did, and the amount of time, your testimony of what you sent us was just so spot on, so we can't say, well, they didn't understand what they were voting on. You guys made it incredibly clear, so I appreciate that, and even with knowing we're going to get some financial hits, like Dan said, we have the right people in place to help us, take us to the next spot. And when I think about in this exact room in 2020, right before COVID hit, and we were having all the community meetings of what, you know, we did tours in every building, and then we also had a financial team, and I find it quite ironic that we landed exactly where we are now. So, we heard the community then, and then we brought new life to it and re-explored some other things, and so I feel so confident in that, and even with, you know, we're going to have to look at other financial things coming up, it still is the right thing for Springbrough. Our kids, our community deserves this, and we need it to move forward to that next level. So, I'm excited about the resolution, and I think that we have great community support around it, and people that are really willing to jump in and help us prepare for November. So, even with some difficult news today, it's very exciting to think about that next step for Springbrough. So, that is all that I had. Did either of you guys have anything else? No? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Submove.
Roll call, please.
Bad?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Psychop?
Yes.